Early afternoon day for us, so appreciate you coming in this early.
I kinda like this.
Just get over it. Kinda like the old six o'clock in the morning dance?
Yeah. Jesus Christ.
We gotta get to 5:00 AM and then have class.
It's another day for the people.
I feel Jesus Christ.
Should pass now. What's taking my idiot away from me? It's better.
I'm leaving Bill last night.
Yeah, well, you know, you have there virtually, have there physically. There's nothing too attached. Half the time our county meetings are about basketball. It's changed every year since I've been in the conference.
I suppose that brings in, right? You know, football, it's all districts.
We have seventeen where we is? Yeah, seventeen school conferences, so from Creighton to Walts Hill, Homer to Winnebago. So I think it's complicated that college something or other.
So far.
It's alright. Could arena from here.
She actually has. I wanna have a few cheese. I'd like to get a little of the shrimp. It's a train. She's only using this object. I think it's like.
Making friends. He should stop being so hard. You better shut up.
There's a lady who's around on the dock. Fill the meeting order, withstands. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now entertaining motion, declare an open meeting. Move second.
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Meeting is open. Opens meeting act is posted on the door back there. Here to read the app. Uh, roll call, that's the door.
Yes.
Krista, myself here. Wyatt.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Prove the agenda. Pretty simple. Somebody wants to add something to it, why just prove it. He looking that like it?
I'm gonna do a preview agenda, second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Portion carries. Okay, we're at public comment. I assume we got some people want to speak? Or not?
Yeah.
Okay. Clear out that portion of our agenda, set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. This morning. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you when that five minute time period has left. Elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Plainview Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments under me. Who would push to speak?
I'll go first.
Okay, just make your name.
Robert Dought. Just ironic to me that this is a place for education and we're worried more worried about athletics. Schools not gonna be in session five days a week. But yet, we're gonna practices every afternoon from what I understand. Um, I believe when you're exercising and practicing, whether it be football, cross country, volleyball, your respiratory rate goes up. I believe when you exercise. And uh, we're so worried about this virus. Don't you think you're got more of a chance spreading the virus that way? By increased respirations versus just sitting in a classroom? That's my take on it. Doesn't make any sense to still have athletics. Schools should be first.
Maybe the exercise and the sports is, and I understand that's important. It's important to challenge kids in our school, you know, the ones that don't have the greatest home lives. But maybe we don't have to travel to other towns just yet. I don't know exactly what the plan is as far as athletics are concerned yet, but you know, that going out of the community is gonna increase the risk exponentially. So, and I don't know how, in my case, it's seventh and eighth grade sports. How if we're doing odds one day and evens another, are we gonna get those kids together on a certain day and have them do sports? Or I don't know what that model looks like. But it doesn't make any sense for us to drive a seventh grader to town to practice state cares. But like I said, I don't know what that looks like. Maybe you guys can clarify that for me.
We'll get into that later.
My name's Melissa Door. I haven't been to a meeting for two years. The last time I was at a meeting, I reminded you what your constituents want, and I feel that that needs to happen again. You were elected by the people of this county to represent the parents, the families, and our tax dollars for the city of Plainview. I do not feel without a meeting yesterday, school could have been called without any parents being involved to have a say, without the board being fully present. I realize that the health department can have their say. They can give you advice after what Rickett said, that everything's opened up and back to normal. But you guys have a governing body that you have to answer to, and you have to take our tax dollars into account. They have to be spent in our best interest. Our children's best interest is to be at this school. The argument I had with Dr. Alt yesterday about mental health. Long term, their education is their best form of mental health. I feel like there is no argument on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else?
I'm Chance Anderson, and I found it comical that you guys had to cancel school yesterday to disinfect. When uh, when you guys started school, everybody talked about how you guys are gonna disinfect every, every day between class periods. But then, one of the reasons yesterday was to disinfect. I just, I mean, I just feel like, uh, let's get our shit together, you know? Like, let's stick with one story and just go with it. Instead of changing the rules up every five minutes.
And while we have our shit together, this was supposed to keep our schools open. This was supposed to mitigate that. We put our kids in masks for you guys. We told them to just do it, to just get through it. Do it, keep it on there. It's for your safety, and it's so you can keep going to school. Is this just a sham right here?
So they tell you Pierce don't have a mandatory mask. They only have zero cases, according to my wife. So kinda ironic that we have a mask mandate here at school. They have a breakout.
Well, I think personally Pierce is smarter than us, and when they do get sick, they just don't tell anybody. That's all you gotta do. Like, good God, it's just the government, they don't tell them everything.
Hey, is there somebody new that wants to speak? Okay, we're on discussion items. COVID return school plan. I'm just gonna start out kinda going through yesterday. How things evolved. I'm gonna pay blame for a few things. Day four yesterday, the school got called off. And they started a plan, administrative team, yeah. We're gonna meet again yesterday to build that plan. And so I texted Dr. Alt yesterday morning and said, if you want me to come in while you're doing this. I'd be more than willing to. I had a full day planned. Didn't really have time, but I was important enough, I'd take the time. And so he texted me mid-morning, somewhere, said they're gonna meet at 11:45. So I came in, and I walked into the conference room, conference table. And my eyes opened. It looked to me like I was in Baby NASA. These three all were sitting in front of a laptop, two of them, maybe all three had their phone in the other hand. Several times during the meeting, Mr. Schmidt looked at his, he was getting stuff on his, his watch. And these are all school related things. And they proceeded to go on and try and figure out what was going on and why it was going on with our, with our cases. And you know, what these people have access to and can figure out amazes me. They could tell one kid was working in what concession stand on what day. They were looking at trying to group kids that have it, adults that have it, parents that have it, and tried to piece together where it was coming from. Trying to find the hotspot in our school, figure out what, so they could come up with a plan to slow it down. And they were, I mean, they were, they were pulling up a lot of information. It was like a detective scene in there, what they were doing. Then the uh, health department called, they were on the speakerphone. And then they started working with them, same thing. Talking about individuals who they hung out with. One time we were talking about HVAC, you know, does this room have good circulation? For a while, they were talking about what position a kid plays on the football team. Is he next to other kids? Could be spreading it that way. I mean, they were covering stuff that none of us in this room could have had any part of being involved in that and known what we were talking about. And these guys know their crap.
What's their job?
Well, we don't doubt that they do.
Okay, I'm just telling you what happened yesterday. So we had the meeting, at the end of it, Dr. Alt looked at me and he says, is it okay if we send this out? And I said yes. And my, my opinion at that time is, and I wanted to say this first, but you board members, what's our number one responsibility as a board member? What's the number one thing we're supposed to do?
Showers.
No. Well, pardon. The number one thing is do what's best for the students. Number one, top priority, do what's best for the students. And to me at that time, I thought, we got, we got all these kids in school, learning. Can't be sitting at home doing nothing. And I thought, we can get this going. Might not be what we all want, but we get the kids back to learning. I knew we couldn't have a meeting last night, they weren't available. I didn't want the kids not to be in school today, so I said, let's, let's put it out. So we got time. If, if board doesn't like it, we can get together and meet, and we can make adjustments. By Monday, we can have those adjustments in place, and kids are still learning. It's doing to me what I thought was best for the students. But I agree with you. Kids need to be learned. Now, whether it's in school, great, but if it can't be in school, somewhere. And so I told him, go ahead and send it out. Well then, you know, and I know you guys were all waiting for this because we thought it was gonna be earlier. And I'm sure you were all wondering what was going on. Because the health department couldn't meet until.
It was noon to you or so. So it's noon to one, I'm with the health department.
So I got out of the meeting, I went home, and then I got, I got the plan from Dr. Alt. And I looked at it, and I noticed that it just had my name on it. So I texted him back, I said, did you send this out to the full board? He said, no, I thought maybe you wanted to forward it and add some comments to it. And so I did. Well, I was busy. I was driving, I was in the middle of a project, and I didn't get to it right away. Cause I do work too. And I got to it, I sat down, I started typing my comments, forwarding it. Got down without the last sentence, and I believe yours came out first as a phone call, is that right? And my phone goes off, it's the high school, and I said, oh shit. People are gonna be pissed. So I finished typing my last sentence, sent it, you guys probably got them both within less than five minutes. And I, I take blame for that, you know? I could have got it out earlier, I did. I take responsibility for that. You know, from then, when I, I don't know, it sounds like maybe all hell broke loose, I don't know. But uh, that's what happened, you know? Yeah, I, I'll take the heat. I'm big boy, I put my big underwear on this morning, so he can give it to me, I don't care. But what these three people did in that room impressed me a big time.
I have one more question.
The plan that they have, maybe you don't like, and that's fine. We can adjust that. But their effort was second to none. So I'll spend a little bit of time, you guys wanna talk about yesterday? What went wrong, what you didn't like, whatever. And then we'll move on to what we wanna do to change or correct.
And if I can, you know, comment to Mr. Sauer, and that's I think an accurate description of kind of really what, what went down. So I'm glad that you were free to come in and be part of that listening session and, and discussion. And really, I think that's what this meeting is about, is whether we're comfortable with the plan that we approved in, before school started. Do you notice at Northwork, if you read Northworks paper yesterday? They, their board has decided, we're not gonna necessarily follow our plan. We're gonna take it on a very local basis. So what happens countywide or district wide is not necessarily gonna dictate what we do at, at Northwork Public Schools. So they had the same conversation, I think, that, that is really the target of my conversation here. Is, you know, are, are we gonna be, you know, held bound completely by the plan, or do we have some flexibility? And, and the reason that we decided that we need to move to an orange level, which is, we go to this hybrid teaching and learning system. Even though our county hasn't gone orange, we did tick out for the second week in a row yesterday. Closer to 2.0. I don't know the formula, so how quick it might maybe get orange, I don't know. It didn't, we kinda asked the health department yesterday, they wouldn't give us a heads up, nor did they really know at that point. But.
How many actual cases do we have?
Yeah, we, Mr. Schmidt has that, but here at Plainview High School, as we were talking with the health department, they said, yeah, if we had a meter for Plainview High School, you'd probably be orange. If we had one just for Plainview High School, not Plainview Public Schools, not necessarily the community of Plainview. But they know all our cases, they know all our isolations, they know all our quarantines. They're supposed to be, and have to be, and are, told about every positive case. So when somebody goes to the hospital and gets a test, they communicate that.
How about 50% that's positive?
That can't be held secret. That information has to be shared. Okay, so the health department said, yeah, you know, we're not telling you what to do, we only advise you. And I think it's in our best interest to probably follow their guidance. Plainview High School would be orange. Okay, and so, you know, so yes, the county's not orange. So for us to move to orange, you know, took, you know, kind of a, just a decision using data. And just over the course of the past five days, when we have phone call after phone call from the health department, where kids come into the office and us having to send families home. Five and six and eight kids a day for several days in a row. Just to try to stop that bleed, we thought we, we need to go to that level. So um, so it's definitely a worthy conversation to determine whether we wanna have some flexibility with it, or, or stick to what it says. And if the county's not orange, we're not going. Okay, Mr. Schmidt, you have those specific numbers, or Mrs. Thompson? Do we keep a spreadsheet of every student, every adult, staff member? Whether their isolation quarantine dates on, dates there to come off?
Uh, in the high school, we have thirty-five students that'll be out today. That's with the addition of two more last night after eight o'clock. And then we have five staff members total, so there's three positive staff members in this building. Six positive students in this building with one more test out that we haven't got back yet. And then that would leave you with the others are all quarantines. So the soonest we will get one back is the twentieth. And then we have everything out to as far as September thirteenth, right now.
So when we talked about these masks.
Yes.
That meeting, we said, if we wear a mask, the kids wear a mask, the only ones that have to be gone are the ones that test positive. So if only six tests are positive, why is there thirty kids out?
Outside of school. Because we had, a lot of these are siblings, they're not single kid households. There's a few on here that a parent tested positive, so they have to be at home. The two last night was a parent getting tested, they have to stay home because they don't have the results back yet. So. My hands are tied on that one.
Yeah.
So you guys, you guys are saying that you're trying to find a hotspot in the school. A hotspot's obviously not at the school, it's in the public.
Not necessarily. We, we, in our conversation with the, well, we think we do know. I mean, there's never any, you know, definitive, but we believe that the issue, anytime you take your mask off, sustained exposure is un, when you're unmasked, within six feet of somebody for fifteen minutes or younger. Okay, so those are the criteria we have to go by. So uh, the only time it's during school where kids take their masks off. We do give them mask breaks, but that's when we can social distance. So they take their masks off currently for PE, weightlifting, and to eat lunch. Now during lunchtime, we can't separate necessarily by six feet, or we hadn't up to this time. We hadn't been able to separate by six feet, and they may be sitting next to somebody for fifteen minutes. So there's an opportunity for spread, for sustained exposure, I should say.
Lunch we have fixed.
We have, we did put together a different plan now for lunch. Okay, uh, so that we can avoid that. Uh, PE and, and the weight room. And this is where we think, as we drill down, we think that this is maybe the nexus of, of some of our spread. Is, is PE and weight room, the weight equipment. Our weight room is not a very well-ventilated area. We talked about HVAC yesterday, as Mr. Sauer mentioned. So we're gonna, we're gonna fix that. But initially, we're like, we don't wanna wear masks during PE while people are, you know, breathing heavy. You know, that, we're gonna create another issue there. So we have to be just more vigilant with when these masks come off, kids cannot be within six feet of each other. Okay, and our equipment in the weight room, uh, you know, we may, we may, and we discuss this, haven't determined for sure, we may shut our weight room down.
That would make sense.
We may shut our weight room down. You know, obviously, before we go to that, we look at, are there things that we can do prior to that? Or do we just need to go to that point? So that's a big decision, just like this yesterday ago, that, that, that is a big decision. So, yes, I, I get it, the masks are an inconvenience. When we talked about this a month ago, we're like, we were proud of this inconvenience that we're taking to keep our kids safe. And then, and then we have to deal with it. That's been the most frustrating thing for your administrative team, I assure you. Okay, but we can't control what kids do after school, and so most of this list are kids at Subway, driving around on weekends, doing what, you know, we can't control that. And those kids, when they get called, and those families get called by the health department, you know? And they explain that we need to know who has potentially been exposed for two days prior to the onset of symptoms. Okay, and kids are honest, we hope they are. Well, I did go to Subway and sat for half an hour, like, well, who was it? So and so and so and so. Contact information, health department contacts them, quarantines them for two weeks. And they contact us. So, and we know that we've got some parents that don't like it. But then when we're contacting, we can't ignore the information we get from the health department that says, these students have to quarantine. Well, we're not gonna let them in the school. Even if our parents are upset, board won't believe that they should have to be. So, hands are tied a little bit on that.
So the kids waitlifted all summer without masks and didn't have an outbreak, didn't or?
Yeah, this thing has evolved quickly, as we all know. You know, masks has, have been the most controversial part of this whole thing, aren't they, basically, since, since March? So we know that it's evolved, and the whole country has gone from five percent wearing them to eighty percent wearing them. And a lot of those eighty percent back in March and April, we're like, I'm never gonna wear a mask, I was one of those people.
So. I appreciate chairperson Mike. I didn't mean to sound like I didn't yesterday. I know it's pain in the ass this time of year. I'm gonna tell you my compliance, and you can address them, I ain't going to. The original policy, the comment and the policy that I set forth as a motion to adopt the masks, were uninformation given to me by Mrs. Thompson to all of us. If somebody became positive, only that person would be quarantined, nobody else would. Now either she was misinformed, or she was not telling the truth. Either way, that motion there now is irrelevant. So that whole policy, in my, my view, is inaccurate. This board had a decision of when we were to be consulted after the policy was made. And we were to give it our blessing, our vote. That did not happen, so I'm upset about that, Dr. Alt, Mr. Sauer. I mean, you blatantly threw policy out the window. And I'm not happy at all about that. I talked to Department of Health yesterday. I got ahold of them last night. I know a few of them. I talked to Roger, he told me that the meeting took place at 11:45 AM. He was not on the phone, but he knew what the drift of the meeting was. He said to state and hold your recommendations. So then my question is, if, I kinda agree with some of the people that if you're gonna have sports, you don't really know where it's coming from. And that seems to take precedence. I'm not in favor of that at all. But I have a question for Mr. Sauer. Why would the school be closed today? And who would have made that decision? You said that earlier today. Why would it be closed today? Wasn't from the state, so who made the decision?
I'm not saying, maybe I did, but I didn't mean that it would be closed, I just meant we needed to get our kids back to a learning situation. Whether it be here or home or whatever. And I just, I felt like this plan was something that could work at least for a couple of days, until we had the chance to have a meeting. You know, we gotta admit, our numbers are going up. What we were doing wasn't working, right? And they agree with that, what we're doing wasn't working.
Well, not, I mean, maybe what we were doing was working, what they were doing outside of school is, you know? You can't, like Darren said, you can't control what they do when they live here, it's 3:30 or 3:30.
But something doesn't work. So to me, while we're going down the same path we've been going down, it wasn't gonna turn around. It wasn't gonna change anything. So I thought, why not try something?
I don't personally believe anything we do is gonna change anything. It's too embedded into the vote. And I personally think if you're in close school on an issue of this magnitude, it has to be a vote by this board, not an individual's decision. That's my personal belief, Dr. Alt. So I would like a motion to vote on this COVID plan, yes or no, as it stands now.
Uh, we're done discussing it, yeah.
Very well, please tell me, that's what I want.
Okay, well, you can make the motion, I guess, we'll see what goes next. Did you make the motion, yes or no? I'll second, I don't. We can vote on it as stands, or we can discuss it. I mean, we can, we can vote on it and then rehash it or whatever. It doesn't match, right?
I'd like to hear more details about it before we, before I make that decision. Cause there's still a few questions I have. The main one was, how long is this? Is it, I think you did, on your second call, you said, maybe we evaluate every?
We're looking, going through Thursday next week, just to see how many of these kids will get back. Because I think there are around twelve to fifteen kids we would get back then next week. And there are still a few tests that are out and some quarantines that are out. So that would give us around a ten day period to see how many of those start coming down with symptoms and do tests. Meaning that if we start gaining those kids back, symptoms don't develop, that the heightened and the amount of quarantines and results that we're getting back would start going down. And if we can get that, then we would be open to evaluating and then coming back to full in school. Versus just having half the kids here at a time. So that means that Monday the twenty-eighth would be when we would have them all come back. But say our numbers continue to go up in that situation, we would postpone it another week and evaluate it at the end of that next week.
Well, we were originally told, I think, at the time before we made that motion adopting the state tick meter.
Yeah.
At the same time as the masks, that if a student was seventy-two hours low of fever, they could come back.
And that's after they test the positive, correct?
Yeah, they have to be seventy-two hours symptom-free. That, and it depends if they, if they've tested positive, Dr. Alt, or just in general?
Well, I was, I was led at that time by your administration, that is. If they came in, they had a fever, they had to go home. Not seventy-two hours until they were, since getting the fever.
You know, I, we send a kid home every day of the year if they have fever. We've had a lot of kids that have symptoms that aren't fever. You know, so fever's just one of them. It, it's primary one, certainly. But the seventy-two hours is, students have to be symptom-free for seventy-two hours after ten days. is, uh, students have to be symptom-free for seventy-two hours, uh, after ten days. That's if they had tested positive. So the isolation is for ten days, but they have to have been symptom-free for seventy-two hours. Uh, I don't, I, I, you know, and I'm sorry, and I don't consider.
You're told that they're days.
Well, I, and I don't wanna necessarily go back and try to figure out exactly what was said. I don't recall saying if somebody's got a fever, they go home for three days. I, I, you know, I don't, I, I don't necessarily recall that, but, um, so, you know, but again, not, not disputing that. Um, yeah, Roger, I talked to yesterday, Dr. Thor, I mean, he was not on the call, and I don't know that that's, but we had that call set up for eleven forty-five. I don't think, don't anybody think that, that we're misleading anybody. His call was at eleven fifty-five. I mean, if it wasn't at eleven forty-five, it doesn't matter. I just wanna make sure that people know we're not, you know, trying to, I just wanna deal with facts on what happened yesterday. Uh, and certainly had a good conversation with you. As far as activities go, we have pumped the brakes on activities. We have pumped the brakes on activities. And yesterday, talking with the Health Department, uh, we determined, and, and they agreed, they said, it sounds like this is not a spread from activities. Okay, so activities are the other half of education. They're not just something we do on the side for kids that wanna do more. It's the other half of education. Okay, and so we don't wanna just, you know, say, just quite readily, say, well, we're not gonna do this, especially if, if our evidence doesn't suggest that it's causing us harm, that it's the reason for the spread. Okay, and so, you know, as, as Mr. Sauer said, looking at the cases and where they are, looking at their schedules and who they're around while here, uh, we believe that it's a PE, mostly weight room issue, uh, not football, not volleyball. Um, so we, we believe that those could resume after a suspension of time. Now, to come and practice, to have fifteen kids or twenty kids come into a gym or go outdoors, uh, we didn't believe was a, you know, that doesn't have the density of our hallways or of our classrooms. Um, so we wanna maintain some type of normalcy for kids if their regular routine school day is not so normalized. Uh, so this is a, this is six school days. And just the, the bleeding that we had for multiple days in a row, we just wanted to stop that, even though a lot of it admittedly was, mom just tested positive, called the school, get their kids out of school. So that, that wasn't a school-related, uh, you know, quarantine.
So I have a question before I'm ready to vote. You know, if we cancel this option, what are your proposals instead? Because I wanna know what my options are before I, I vote this one out, whether I like that one better than that. So you two have both stated that you're basically against all restrictions. You actually voted that way in the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what's your plan? Is that how you feel that we should just, since the governor says no restrictions, we should open the doors, we should let everybody in? For the sick or not sick, teachers are sick or not sick, they're in school? Because they're not gonna know if they're sick. We're not gonna take temperatures anymore. Kid's got a fever, and might think, I got a cold. Are you all right with that? I mean, what's your plan? What's your alternative?
Well, Mike, you told me yesterday you had no confidence in the State Department of Health, you know, and, and our information so far has been false. It really has. So I stepped back from the school, I looked at the community, I looked at the state, I looked at the governor's, his advisors, and what's, what's actually working. We have, Tilden has over thirty-some cases. They're not, they don't have masks. They're not doing anything. They still have full, full, uh, athletics. I talked to one of the faculty members yesterday. I mean, to me, we're way overboard on what's happening. I don't think it's as serious as, as you want. I mean, you know, Halloween's coming up, Mike, I don't know, maybe I need to worry, worry about that, too. I mean, I don't think this is that big of a concern. I really don't. It is too embedded in the public now for whatever we do, Dr. Arden. Bless you for all your drawing, bless you for all your drawing. It's too late.
My other question was about your plan. Who's gonna feed the kids that are virtually learning? Who's gonna take all their meals out? Because we have to feed them, whether they're here or at home, if they're in school. So we have to go, I mean, that's the kids in, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna deliver all their meals house by, and maybe we, maybe deliver two days' worth of meals in one day, but you still have to get all that food out there.
Yep, and that's a great point.
You still have to make all of them meals to the kids, so that's apparently.
Yep, and, and something that, that definitely we thought of, uh, that, you know, but doing this on a, on a two-week by two-week basis, if this were gonna be a more quasi-permanent plan, we would, we would arrange to probably, you know, what do we need to do, like we did in the spring, uh, to make sure, you know, our fam, that our kids are fed. Uh, so we, we would, we would come up with that. If we were gonna go more than two weeks, this is a six-day, this is a six-day.
But one thing with this one, Travis, versus earlier, is the elementary are gonna be here. Those are the kids that maybe can't make their own meals. The high school kids, they can make a sandwich at home.
You should, if they have enough to make it.
Yeah, right. They can be by for a couple of weeks. Now, if the elementary was at home, it'd be a different story. Be a whole different story with parents and, and learning and all the works. But high school kids, they'll fend for themselves for a couple of weeks.
And we wouldn't have to deliver. We didn't have to in the spring. We did that as a courtesy to our families. Um, so if we were to arrange a plan to feed those people on the, our high school kids on the off days, they would come in and get it to go. Uh, and we, we could put that together, you know, in, in relative a short period of time. I don't think we have a hundred percent participation by any means, uh, but we would sure offer that service.
I'd like to say something. First of all, I apologize to Mike, because he did take a lot of crap yesterday, and, you know, I apologize for the part that I did. However, I, after having all the information, I personally do not believe that it was Mike's fault at all. He should never be put into position, in my opinion, to send out an email. I believe our, our administration staff did a great job. They do a great job in Fornia. But that information should come from our administration. Mike could have read it over, and then you guys could have gotten the word, yes, Mike heard it, read it, stood to go, and then made your phone calls, and then Dr. Arden sent up full board. I believe this has been a problem before, and we've talked about it. You need to be in contact with, we are aboard. That takes some pressure off of Mike when he was busy yesterday. And that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm not, I mean.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been Mike's. We had a policy, it was supposed to come before the, for vote, before it went out.
Uh, that's just.
Mike shouldn't have been put there.
That's my biggest issue, is I guess that we've been conversing, you know, through email, and it sounded like, once the plan came out, which we were waiting on, then we'd have this opportunity here to discuss it all.
Before the plan went out to vote.
And make that call, and then, and I don't know, you know, you know, maybe, I think it's a decent plan. Uh, I just, I just thought we would all have this opportunity, so everybody get on the same page, hash things out. I was surprised, because I was in the middle of getting the call, and my phone beeped, and that's when I got the email of the plan. I was like, okay, well, I guess we went ahead and, and went with it. But I, I think we should have been able to, I understand, start, wanted to get schools started as soon as we can, but I think any of us would have met at any time yesterday if we needed to, once the plan came. That's my only.
No, that was part of my, so these guys have to leave at the meeting or something? Your meeting?
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt and I had a meeting in Wakefield that I couldn't, I couldn't postpone, knowing that we'd get back at maybe seven o'clock, at this meeting at seven, notify teams at eight or later about a potential change of their plans in the morning. And again, it's, it is for high school kids. That's a, that is different than, than, than elementary, but that certainly would have created at, at eight o'clock last night or later, you know, some anxiety for folks. And so, um, so, you know, understood. So I think, you know, again, and, and I know that the whole country's having this debate over whether any of this is real, or serious, or necessary. Um, whether we have a, a return to school plan or not, we're still gonna, we're still gonna receive letters from the department that says, these kids can't be.
Then we receive the letter?
And do we, do we allow them to?
Well, they're sick, they're sick, they can't come to school. What's?
They're on quarantine.
That's the same thing.
No, it isn't.
No, they can't come to school. Whether you're quarantined or you're sick, you're not supposed to go to school.
If you're quarantined, you're not sick. You've been exposed to somebody who is exhibiting symptoms. And yeah, it's fourteen days, and that is, that's, that's, that's a painful and, and inconvenient, to say the least, to kids and, and, and parents, that the department says they have to stay in for fourteen days. Well, if you're telling us to let those kids in, then we'll let those kids in, I guess.
I, if they're sick or they're quarantined, they can't.
If they're sick, they don't come to school. You're right. Well, now you just said, if they're quarantined, they can't come to school.
That's why I said the first time, and you said no. Because you said, well, I said if they're sick and quarantined, if they're sick or quarantined.
If they're quarantined, they're not determined to be sick, but they could be. They don't, they don't know. They've been exposed. Okay, so do we let quarantined kids in school?
Wasn't that the purpose of taking the temperatures and the masks?
Yeah, but there are other symptoms. We've seen, kids have come to the nurse's office quite a bit the past week, um, with a cough or, you know, uh, or have lost a sense of taste. When they come and tell us that, yeah, we, we, we could send them back, back to class. Prior to this, we wouldn't send them back to class unless they had a fever. Okay, or if they had something chronic. It was obvious to us. Okay, but now, if they give us one of these symptoms, so you tell us if you want us to follow the guidelines of the Health Department or not, I, maybe that, is that, is that a simple decision? Probably we don't have time to rewrite a policy or rewrite a plan here.
Why not?
Well, well, then what, what is, then what do you propose?
Well, we need to back up to the, to the motion that I made for the mask, because I was inaccurate information. I'm forward with, with the plan from there.
Um, Dr. Thor, I.
I don't, I don't feel that, uh, what we're doing now, what is proposed now, I mean, the elementary's open, they're not isolated, they're not confined to their room, the teachers don't have just hallway, we don't have sign-in for guests, we don't, we, I mean, everything's still just, like I said before, half-assed. It really is, and I'm really tired of it. So we either have a real plan, and we really do it, or we don't. But what, but what we have here is half-assed, and I'm not in favor, but we go orange.
Dr. Thor, I'd like to clarify. You said that I gave you half-information, but on, um, August seventeenth, the email that I sent about, um, masks and about not wanting to necessarily go to mask, I have attached the Health Department's, um, forms right to it, and it says right there that if there are close contacts, which are the six feet with no masks, and the situations that we are in, which are why a majority of our students are quarantined, um, that they would have to quarantine. So that information was all given to the board, so I just wanna clarify that that was given, so there wasn't misinformation.
Well, then, and then I misinterpreted, because when I asked you in person at the board meeting, that was not what you said. We can go back and watch it on YouTube.
That was pulled, if you remember, I went and pulled up the email.
Correct, and I asked you, I said about the masks, and you said if they're sick, they're the only ones that have to go home. And then we talked about the seventy-two hours. Was there anything about the fourteen days? That was the policy that I voted on. I didn't vote on this one.
Isn't it still that way? I mean, if a kid comes down.
Kids in masks. Okay, our list, we have thirty-five students on in the high school building, and I've had phone calls for every single kid on this list of the Health Department, talking about close encounters. I've had to go to classrooms and ask who's been by who. And I can tell you that this list would be more than doubled if we didn't wear masks. Because I tell the Health Department, I say, all right, we wear masks all day in class. If we take our masks off, we make sure that we are six feet apart, except for at lunch. That was before we made that change. And so I told them that, and they said, you do not need to go and find out who they sit by in class then, at that point in time. If we were not wearing masks, I would have to go through and knock out a six-foot radius of every class of a kid that tested positive or had a symptom.
Okay, but that statement, then how do they decide who they were in close contact with for the last forty-eight hours to isolate? Because if you're within six feet.
For more than fifteen minutes. So that's why I say during a class time, passing time, we can get through that four minutes. We're not considered close contact then during that time. So we're talking just in the classroom. So we have teachers set up where kids go and they sit in certain seats every day, okay? No, do we not have assigned seating, but some teachers do, other classes, kids are creatures of habits, they sit in the same seats by the same people every day. So those kids can tell us who they've been by. And our kids have been very honest. When I go talk to them, the kids on the bus, they ate treats on the bus, so they didn't have masks on that one. So we eliminated treats or food on bus rides, because that knocked out five kids. And they could tell us who was sitting there. And when I went and asked kids, okay, you tested positive, who did you sit by at lunch? We have a seat in between us, but I need to know who was over there, who was here, who was there. And they would be able to tell me. If I sit by the same people every day, it's this one, this one, this one. Then I timed kids at lunch. When we go in there, from the first kid getting their milk to the first kid walking out was fourteen minutes. So if it's a fifteen-minute exposure, I tried to explain to the Health Department, our kids were only in there for fourteen minutes at most, eating. So does that fall under the fifteen minutes? Our kids were very honest and said, we got to lunch early that day, it was twenty minutes. That knocked out another six. Um, so I mean, our kids are very aware of this, and they're being honest with who they're sitting by and who they're hanging out with after school and giving us information. And I can say that the mask did save us from having versus thirty-five students out, sixty-five students out.
And Mr. Schmidt would have done nothing else this whole week. They'd go and find kids in six or seven classrooms that were with, he'd have to talk to, you know, practically every kid in school. And now there's gonna be disputes. Kids don't wanna be quarantined. So they'd say, maybe, well, you know, okay, uh, but we, we can't be dishonest.
And I can tell you that when people come into our building, Tammy is vigilant on making sure that our guests sign in every day, and that they are wearing masks when they go to meetings, IEP meetings, um, people that are coming in just to drop something off or pick something up, even makes them put a mask on for the three minutes that they are in our building. Um, so I mean, she is very, very good about that. So I feel that the things that we have down, we are making vigilant efforts to follow, and we see it every day.
I hate the mask, you know, they've done this on this, with, you know, why, why make them quit wearing the mask? And they're used to it now, let's just keep that. But I haven't saw they can go to school every day.
Okay, and, and I.
That's my whole thing, is I think they should go to school five days a week. But you wanna play sports, play sports. If you're gonna play sports, you go to school every day.
Yeah, and so.
And the worst thing gets brought up, so I, I mean, how I look at this, because I have a big role in deciding if we continue activities. Um, the reason we knocked down was to eliminate exposure. We have a hundred and thirty-two kids in this building. So if we knock it down to half, we have sixty-five students coming through here, limited exposure. So, um, we, a lot of times it's asked, why are we continuing activities if we won't let all kids in school? Our football team has twenty-one kids on it. Our volleyball team has twenty kids on it. Our junior high teams have fourteen kids on it. Okay? Even if you add all those up, it is the same amount of kids that would be in here for half a day. So.
What do you want?
The reason for doing it is limiting the exposure in our building to try and keep that number down and get it down to where we can come back. So I'm not gonna argue that with you guys. I mean, that's, we can make that decision, and if you wanna go full-time, I'm okay with that. But the reasoning that I wanted to continue athletics is because it doesn't increase our numbers or increase our exposure, is what I'm trying to say.
So the way games, you're not concerned about way games and people going there and coming home and all that?
Speaking from our sense, we didn't walk into a locker room, we didn't walk into the school. We went to Neely, we got off the bus, we played, we got on the bus, we came home. I mean, that's exactly how we did, do it. Volleyball's a little bit of a different animal, and the fact that if you play a triangular, you're stuck in the building for a little bit. Um, you know, if I can find a way to make that different, I can go about it. And I know Taylor would be more than happy to work with a plan to figure out how we can make this work to eliminate that.
Well, thank you for helping me understand your concern.
Yep.
The, uh, the NSA has, has pretty good guidelines for school districts, and they haven't, uh, required a suspension of activities, obviously, like they did in the spring. So we do take guidance from them as well. They provide a whole, most schools are doing the same thing about what, if they host, and what their restrictions might be, and, and definitely a concern about exposure. Now, schools hear about what's happening in other schools and communities. So they may make a decision, we're not coming to play, because we hear you're a hotspot, so to speak. Okay, that would be the case for us, honestly, right now. You know, when we were in our conference meeting yesterday, practically everyone's, you know, good luck playing, we, we understand that. Arlington, they're supposed to play football, you know, they had to go play a different game. You know, I mean, just, so the school districts, you're gonna make those decisions. Um, you know, I, I would say, you know, Mr. Schmidt, you know, is, uh, you know, is athletic director, certainly involved in that, uh, but he and I, along with Mrs. Thompson, we certainly talk every day about this, and, and we all know, we all have. But he and I, along with Mrs. Thompson, we certainly talk every day about this and we all know, we all have. You don't know what's going on, but anything that's done, I certainly endorse. So even with Mr. Schmidt's voice on the phone call yesterday. I let him make the call because it's his building. If this had to do with elementary, that would be Mrs. Thompson's voice on there. Okay. But, but I'm the superintendent and so that, you know. Anything that Mr. Schmidt would, that would have come from him is coming from me. Okay. So you know, let, let me just, you know, I guess make that clear, but. So we, we, you can do, you can have whatever plan you want, but there will be some things that we still, we need to know. We can suspend this completely. Do you want us to still follow quarantine guidelines, rules, recommendations from the health department? So that has to be part of your decision. Knowing whether we're going to do that or not. But I, I will, I will tell you, yeah, as soon as it's public knowledge, if planning public schools. Is allowing quarantine required kids come to school. Talk about health and safety of kids, you know, you're going to have that at the other end of the spectrum. Of people that, that don't believe this whole thing is a hoax.
But they go keep their kids home though.
What? Why can't we just, just keep going? I mean, we didn't let them in before, right? If you were quarantined, you couldn't come, right? That's the way it's been?
Yep.
I don't see why you just can't keep doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
The kids that are quarantined, no, they do the, what is it online? What do you call that?
Remote.
Remote learning. They do the remote learning because well, they obviously can't be here. The ones that are okay to be here, I think should be here.
How about since we know that the weight room has been targeted as a spot, we, we shut that down for a week or two. Or we do P E, we, we have P E, but you don't do the physical activity. Maybe you do some health stuff instead.
And the, things like that where you can.
And the things that, you know, I, I was thinking last night and trying to figure out how to best solve that situation. Cause that's where we can, we can tie it all back to. And I haven't got to talk to these two yet, but when I woke up this morning, I mean, my initial thought was. We need to just have a regular P E class for now until we can get some form of air regulation or something in that room where we can say that. Or some form of plan of, cause right now we're sanitizing every period in there and doing that. But if it's more than just airflow, we got to figure something else out. So yeah, I mean, I would follow along the lines of we can shut down that. And just having regular P E class until we can get some, an alternative plan.
Yeah, that you know what's going on.
Okay. We're getting past our motion here right now on a, a different plan basically. So.
That's what you wanted to know.
Huh?
That's what you wanted to know.
Yeah, but we need to stick to our motion. Be discussing our motion. We're going to discuss something else and then you can take a vote. So Joe made the motion. Who said it?
All seven of us.
Who was that motion?
The motion was.
Motion, you want to go with the plan proposed or do you want to change?
The motion was to cancel the whole plan.
The one that was made yesterday, cancel it and make a new one before we leave today.
Okay. So I, I just want to say this, if we don't cancel it, then definitely we can't change it. Okay. If we cancel it, we got started all over from square one. Okay? If we adjust it, we can just make changes to it and improve that.
Okay. I'll, I'll resent my motion.
I mean, that's fine. If you want to vote, we'll vote. I'm not trying to talk you out. I'm just saying, just because, you know.
I can call, we can call for it before it's over if it doesn't change.
Okay. So the motion's off the table. Okay. So let's start talking about how we want to adjust the plan that we have.
I'm in favor of full school. I am in favor of sick and quarantined, staying home according to state guidelines. Continue to use the masks, modify the primary cause. You know where it's at, make it happen. Keep the damn kids in school full time. That's, I'm not moving off of that one. That's it?
Would that be even, Dr. Earl, if, if we were to go to orange?
If, if Pierce County goes to orange.
Okay. And, and yeah, that, that's, that's easy to do. Uh, on Wednesday, late afternoon, we get the, the rest of it. We get the update from the, from the central.
Cause that was the original motion, Dr.
Yeah.
If Pierce County goes to orange.
If every school has a hybrid, they're going to have a hybrid.
But you're saying only in Pierce County.
Yeah. So, so can I get, can I share a hypothetical? If, uh, if Pierce Public Schools in the community of Pierce, Pierce Manor, if they were to have an outbreak. If we were to cool down and they were to get hot and as a result Pierce County goes orange, do we go remote? Cause that's.
That's a possibility.
That's what, that's what I think you're saying. Not unlikely, but I'm just saying.
You're just giving the scenario that we just went through. Plankton.
Yes.
And we didn't go orange.
Okay. But, but can we have some flexibility to make a local decision regardless of the Pierce County? Or the central health department's risk dial, which is local county. So if Pierce County goes orange, we go orange. Despite what's happened locally. And if we know the hotspot is Pierce or Foster, whatever, but we've cooled down for whatever reason, right? Do we go hybrid, remote? Because a hotspot in Pierce has moved the risk aisle and Pierce County to orange.
No, I'd like to see us be flexible.
That's what we did.
We are now, right? We're doing what we're doing now.
So do you want us to be flexible with the risk dial?
Well, that's what we're here for. Just by the example that you gave anyway, there's too many outside factors outside of the school that affect that risk dial. Right? If we still had all the, or is it still in banner?
They're all back.
Okay. They're all back. Okay.
Well, if they're alive.
Oh God, yeah. Lots of them, they're old. They're going to die anyway, guys.
Where, where does it say we have to go virtual in orange?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Where, where does it say we have to go virtual in your orange status?
So in the orange status, it says that we would, um. How is it?
Possible reduction in the number.
Reduction in number of students.
It says possible reduction. It doesn't say must reduce.
Correct.
And so we would, if Pierce was a hotspot, that would be something this board could come together and go, we possibly do, possibly don't. So I think your program in place is probably adequate for what we have going on. Now, if you keep this, I think your board should still probably vote on activities because it says the governing board must vote on activities. That's not up to administration. So I like that to be addressed, but I think your plan in place leaves you flexibility for those reasons.
Correct. Yes.
Unless I'm reading it wrong.
No. That's what I'm pitching to. I agree a hundred percent.
It, it gives you the option. So if Pierce was a hotspot, this board comes together and go.
And that's what Dr. Earl wants too. He wants flexibility to drill down, assess, claim you public schools as its own. Anyway, regardless of what's going on outside anyway in Pierce County.
Which is your current plan.
Right. Exactly.
That's what Norfolk wanted to do was Madison and Orange, they decided to stay yellow or.
Yeah. So, yeah. So, so you know, certainly recognize that this happened at light speed yesterday. And we had, again, we had three days of, you know, we couldn't believe that anything could be worse than Monday and Tuesday was. You know, we didn't think anything could be worse than last Friday than Monday was. Uh, and so, you know, talking with the health department. Visiting with, with Mr. Sauer. You know, and when the health department, you know, agreed, it sounds like you guys are, you guys are hot right now. Risk dial might not go orange, but it sounds like playing public schools is orange. Okay. So that, that was the. That, that was the reason for the information that I pushed to Mr. Sauer that, that sent, that, that came out yesterday. Is, you know, we, we don't want to look at another, anticipate another five, six, eight, ten. And, you know, it gets frustrating too in our conversations where like, you know, anytime a kid comes to the office, it may send four or five kids home. We had that multiple days in a row. A little frustrating, uh, difficult phone calls with parents to say, you got to come pick up all your kids. Because your fourth grader or your eighth grader came to the office complaining of a symptom. We got a nurse here on staff on Mondays and Fridays, turn it over to her pretty much. Now, do you think our healthcare professional? That we have in our building is going to use any flexibility when determining the healthy kids? Not, not, no, any whatsoever. So we had a little frustration too, because essentially we let our nurse make decisions about health kids. And if they got to go and all their siblings.
That's a lot of responsibility to put on them.
It is.
To make that call.
It, it is. And we had some, you know, you know, we were involved in that to a certain degree, but you know, in our position, it's hard for us to tell our nurse, no.
Well, some of those problems can be eliminated. If a kid is sick, haven't tested, if they're negative, they can come back and tell their.
You know, cause I mean, the symptoms of what? Coughing is a symptom, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, everybody's harvesting, right? There's all kinds of.
We'd use some judgment on that certainly. If a kid generates a fake cough, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty good about that, but. Because kids have figured out, I can get two weeks off of school.
Some are good though.
I can get two weeks off of school if I go exhibit a symptom to the school district. Or to the nurse. I mean, uh, you know, so.
But I'd like to make a comment on why it's, counting on flexibility. You are absolutely dead on track. The reason this meeting is here because what? Flexible from the other direction. To me. So everybody take note of that.
And I will apologize for yesterday, pushing out the call before. I mean, I, we have talked. But I understand where your frustration comes from and my thought was as a parent, I would want to know. Early in the afternoon so I could make plans and make adjustments. Um, and I thought following the plan and. I thought that that was what's best for our students. We decided, um, so I mean, I apologize for not getting that pushed out too soon.
You, you are absolutely correct and you're on course and I appreciate how you think.
But I understand where your frustration is.
There was a policy in place and it was not followed. That's where I'm vengeful.
Yes.
Okay. So we want, well, we want to change this plan to all kids back in school. We want to make a motion. To vote that. I mean, or do you feel like the last meeting we gave them? The variability to make the decisions and we don't need to vote? And they can use that variability? Or do you feel we didn't give them that? And we misused it and we need to change it now?
I agree to keep the kids in school.
But do you feel we gave them that lenience to make that decision in our last vote?
No.
No. So then we need to revote, re-motion and give them that for the next time.
And that would make sense. And it, I mean, if you, if you trust us to move from green to yellow or, or moving from any color. If, if, if we need to have a, an emergency board meeting. Uh, if there's a recommend, if, if either the risk dial mandates it, or we want to discuss it based on where. You know, why is the risk dial moving and are we part of that? Are we the cause of that? Or if there's a recommendation from your administrative team that we change colors regardless of the risk dial. That we have to have a, an emergency special board meeting to determine to go from green to yellow, yellow to orange, orange to yellow, yellow to green. To, to make any movement on. On, on the, 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 the color plan and make any movement from one color. That's a board decision.
I would say a move up is, if you're going from yellow to orange, it requires a board. If you're going down, it doesn't.
You're going from last.
You know, if a dog bites you once, he's going to bite you twice. You got a bit yesterday. I'm not in favor of the card lock anymore.
So you've heard nothing from parents that might be concerned that we're not doing enough because they might have a child that's got health issues. That would be thinking just the opposite that I don't want you going down too early. You know, it better be the board decision. I don't want the administration saying we're going down because I'm concerned about my kid. We received anything from that line. You know, it goes both ways. We've got parents on both sides of the scale here, you know.
But we were less than twenty-four hours from the time that, that from yesterday when this occurred to the meeting. I mean, that's pretty quick.
But I'm just asking, has anybody heard that situation or?
I mean, I understand that, but you know, you're going to have exceptions no matter what. I mean, I understand. I know the kids that have exceptions. And I think those parents are taking the precautions that are required. But you know, it's just like, you can't punish everybody because of one person. You know, that's, that's this whole COVID issue in the first place. I mean, the, the parents need to have their flexibility also.
Could I interject on that subject a little bit, if you don't mind? This administration is, is easy to work with. If you're a parent that's concerned about the healthier child. They'll be more than willing to work with remote learning for individuals, you know, to special cases.
No, I was just curious whether there was ever, ever a concern brought up to anybody that way.
Uh, I can, I can verify though that other communities are looking at us. Within the last three days, yesterday I talked to a board member from Summerland. They're talking about band-aiding masks. You'd want to know how it was going here. He also coaches youth football over there too. We have an upcoming game and with them on Sunday. And I was curious whether I'm following all the health department guidelines if we're quarantining kids from exposures and that. And even though we haven't had any problems on the elementary level though, I mean, I'm very curious what's going on over here. We had a youth football game against Creighton, same thing. Went, they had hurts and rumors. They were concerned. Anyway, parents that they were concerned about what was going on. So eyes are on us while we decide.
So are you okay if our numbers, let's say our, our numbers double within a week? Pierce County is still where we are. Are you okay with just continuing on?
At one point. Tip the steel. If we're that close to being orange, if our numbers double, it's going to be orange.
Well, let's just say it's whatever it is to just not turn it. I mean, what Pierce goes down, everybody else goes down and we don't. It, it doesn't make the orange. Are we, are we okay? Or do we want to call another meeting at that time? Stay in tune.
Well, how many kids will they get back in the next week?
Seven. So.
Thirteen for sure.
So you get half of what's already gone back.
And, and that's fantastic.
It is fantastic.
We don't know that we won't have that.
I just, I have phone calls today too. So.
We got calling on the way home.
Not quite doubles that, but that's been my days for the last three days.
I, I say, any uptick, we have a meeting.
Should we?
If you're concerned about it, call me.
So on Wednesday, as soon as the risk dial changes, I'll push out to you latest information. Here's the risk dial for the county. Here's the risk dial for the district. Here are our current staff and student isolation and quarantine. Here's where they went on. Here's where they're coming back. Okay. We keep all that down. We'll push that out to you on Wednesday. And then that'll be late Wednesday afternoon. Push that out to you on Wednesday. You then talk about whether you want to meet. To status quo. Let's go down, let's go up. But, but you need to be prepared to meet on a routine basis, you know, and on a quick, on a, you know, quick basis. That, you know, that, that's, that's very doable.
Unproblematic.
Do our, uh, do all of our high school kids come to school today? Because we would need to let families know.
They're all coming there anyways.
Well, they're coming to get devices, but we're sending our seven, nine and eleven back home.
Why wasn't that in the phone call? Some of us have to make trips back into town to pick those kids up.
There wasn't an email that came out.
Because last night I talked to parents and nobody knew.
Was it in number?
So I went to look.
You shot it back out. We'll be there.
I, I, I actually had a question about whether like my daughter would stay today. I know she had to come and get all of her stuff and what I ended up telling her was you're going to have to talk to your teachers. I'm not sure. I, I mean, it was, the, the plan was there that it was this class, this class, this class on these days. And this is just a.
But it wasn't specific.
Linguistic criticism, I guess. But when you're only doing it for six days too, we may not even get to see a full cycle of that program. You know what I mean? It's, it's a real short time. So I was, I mean, I read it a number of times and I talked to Mr. Schmidt a number of times and, and I got it clarified, I guess. I wasn't sure if she needed to stay for school today yet or not, but that's a very, you know, she can figure out if she gets here. And you did say the other day, a question was kind of after me, so. That's right. You were, you were welcome to call in. And I did. Get the answer. I'm just saying, I didn't care. I didn't say to you.
I just assumed it would be a hotline last night trying to get ahold of anybody.
It's all right. I'm open. I texted him like. One small suggestion. I talked to the, the health department yesterday and asked them to move the day they report that risk dial. To a different day because it's very difficult to get the information out to everybody. I said, you're eliminating all your local newspapers and all your local, everything. So there, there, she said they would consider that. But what I would encourage you to do is as a parent and a taxpayer and the whole thing. Eliminate as many of those exemptions as you can, because that's what frustrates people. When I come to a varsity football game, I'm expected to wear a mask. When I go to an, a youth football game for the ball backers, I'm not expected to wear a mask. When I come to a volleyball game, I have to, you know, they're limited by attendance. When I go to a football game, nobody is doing anything, you know. If you can eliminate those exemptions, people will be a lot less confused or eliminate. I know it's difficult to do.
But they'll have that other refrigerator because you put it there.
Well, I, I tried to, but when it comes out Wednesday at five, I don't have a chance. You, you know, we, and I've argued this with the class size discussion.
You know, we, and I've argued this with the class size discussion. When you hit a certain number, is there a certain thing we should do? You know, it's kind of like the risk dial thing. If we have 20% of the student population sick or out, should we cancel school completely? Eliminate some of those.
But this thing from the very beginning, it's been day by day. You know, you can try and make a plan, but something jumps up and bites your plan in the butt and it's not accurate anymore and you got to readjust. You can spend a ton of time making plans, but most of them don't get carried out for very long because it changes.
I've never executed a complete plan.
August 3.
And honestly.
But you added that people knew.
I mean, it eliminates the anxiety and eliminates the problems.
Okay, I'm going to see, there's a question, well, one question, just, you know, parents want, there's some parents right now, you have to say that, okay, do my seventh, ninth or 11th grade child, do they have school today? The message was come and pick up your things. Eight, 10 and 12 are face to face Thursday, Friday. Seven, nine and 11 are face to face Monday, Tuesday. Are seven, nine and 11, they're coming to school to pick their things up, are they going to stay? Families need, needs to know.
Do we have a motion there, Jim?
Yes, sir. Can I make an open motion if anybody wants to add another one to it, a minute? Okay, I have an open motion. Full school, sick or quarantined, stay at home as we have been doing. Modify to address the primary cause, leave that up to Mr. Schmidt and Dr. Arl. BOE meets if there's an uptick at Mike Sauer's discretion.
I think we're going to stay at Mike Sauer's house.
Well, at breakfast.
Write that down. Okay, so what can I talk again, please?
Just one thing before you do. I would either add all the, all the administrative staff or stay, stay in administrative staff because they're all in it together, in the plan. Mrs. Thompson, you didn't put Mrs. Thompson in.
Oh, sorry. Okay, yep. All administrative staff.
Are the staff ready today? I mean, it's, are the staff ready anyway to have a full class?
They'll be fine. Yesterday was them planning to do remote for the kids that aren't going to be here, so they'll be, they'll be.
Okay, repeat the motion. We've got full school, sick or quarantined, stay at home as been. Modify to address the primary cause, all administrative staff. Board of Education meets if there is an uptick at the discretion of the president, Mike Sauer.
Uptick in the.
Uptick in the.
Cases or in the cases?
In the cases.
I have another question. And as regards the staff, they've been chanced through all of this. Has there been any pushback from the staff working in this environment?
No, our staff has been.
They've been fantastic so far, I'm asking.
They have been.
Is everybody all right with that wording?
Do you want to close the weight room?
I think that's what.
This is up to the administration.
And they're going to, I mean, they're going to work with us, you know, make suggestions. They're going to listen to us, so. Okay, is that wording, is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there any more contact on this, on the motion?
Mask mandate stands?
Yes.
That's still.
The mask, that's still.
Right, that's how you. As we've been doing, as we've been doing in the past.
Regardless of the health department, or local health department provider in horses, it's still.
Yeah, it's up to our discretion.
At least in Montgomery anyway, and they, and staff, they both want some masks and everything, so. They think you're more awake than anything.
All right, it's been first and second. Trent.
Yeah.
Tim.
Yes.
Vlad.
Yes.
So it's Kristen. Myself, yes, motion period. Get those kids to school. No, I don't have to go home and get them or bring them in.
None of those farm kids are going to want to do their schoolwork when they're at home?
Yeah, they're already going to go off the farm.
Now, you may want to make some exceptions. There might be some parents that aren't ready or some, might be some kids that don't get here on time or.
Yeah, no, I'm completely interested. It'll be quite a scene.
Are we wearing yellow right now?
Yellow.
Yes. We're in yellow now.
Yep, but. I just thought I went to 1.57 yesterday. Well, they don't break it down. When we were talking to the health department, they were. They did, we would be.
I mean, yesterday that our school was.
Right.
So are we still playing as orange here or not?
We're playing as yellow because we go by the health department. Yeah.